The meeting is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a true republic where religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hands up! Hands up!
Okay.
Hands up! Don't shoot! Hands up! Don't shoot! Hands up! Don't shoot! Hands up! Don't shoot! What do we want? Justice! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! Hands up! Don't shoot! 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 Hands up! Don't shoot!
Roll call please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Stanger?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. Approval of the journal.
I move for approval of the journal of meeting of September 9th, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 4th district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
We have nothing under road bridge matters, Madam Chair, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 2nd district.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, 3rd district.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, 4th district.
See if I can refer to the department of planning, to the county councilor, to initiate proper procedure.
So ordered.
Item number five?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number six?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, 4th district?
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number eight?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, 4th district?
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 10?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, 6th district?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, 1st district?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Cool Valley, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, 1st district?
Receive, file, and a change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any add-ons?
No ma'am.
Okay. County Executive Dwyer, do you have any reports?
Madam Chair, no report.
There are no reports of special committees this evening, so we'll move to the public forum. I understand we have 40 speakers?
Yes ma'am.
Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak. We ask that you keep your comments limited to two minutes. There's a timer. Our deputy administrator will alert you when your two minutes are coming to a close, and we ask you to bring your comments to a close at that time. We would like for you to please be respectful of those speaking, so that we can continue to move forward with the public forum. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I make just a few remarks before we begin the public forum?
Sure.
Is that all right? Okay, thank you. I'd like to take a moment and welcome everyone who's joined us here this evening. For our county residents and everyone, this is truly your government, and we are here to listen to your concerns, and we will, and we hear you. Attorney General Eric Holder was in town a few weeks ago, and he said that in addition to the local investigation that's already underway, that FBI agents from the St. Louis Field Office, working together with attorneys from the Justice Department Civil Rights Division and U.S. Attorney's Office, have opened a concurrent federal inquiry. The federal investigation will supplement, rather than supplant, the inquiry by local authorities. At every step, we will work with local investigators, who should be prepared to complete a thorough, fair investigation in their own right. Our president, our U.S. Senator, our governor, our Attorney General, have all echoed General Holder's sentiments and agree that the legal process for the investigation is in place and needs to run its course. I agree and ask that we do that in peace, and that we use this time, and even in this evening, to open up a productive dialogue, to begin discussing the myriad of issues that have brought us to this place. As a member of our community, I'm deeply troubled by the way that we've been torn apart. The issues that we face are bigger than any one of us.
Arrest Darren Wilson! Arrest Darren Wilson! Arrest Darren Wilson! Arrest Darren Wilson! The country and the world are looking to see if we can bridge this divide. Arrest Darren Wilson! 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 That's what the people want! If we can't have it, shut it down! 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 No peace! No justice! No peace! No justice! No peace! No more dialogue! We want action! That's what we want! That's what we want! No more peacefulness! We can use 12 o'clock noon tomorrow. That's right. To denounce him. We can move on. Are you done? If there's a denounce him. Excuse me. If there's too many other people to vote for. Councilman Stanger has completed his statement. Would you please? Mr. Shahid? Mr. Shahid? Mr. Shahid? We don't want to ask you to be removed. Please. I'm sorry, you called my name? Yes, I did. Let's get him out! Let's get him out! Let's get him out! Let's get him out! Hey, hey! Ho, ho! Ho, ho! Let's get him out! 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 It's not fair! No peace! No killing cop police! No justice! 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 No peace! No killing cop police! We don't want them. Nope. And we don't want to wait till January. That's right! We don't want to wait till January. You got a racial propaganda on your hands, you got a racial propaganda on your hands, boy. Treat Darren Wilson back there being kept in jail. Treat Darren Wilson back there being kept in jail. Arrest him now! 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 The only problem we should be here for is that nobody else. I've been to the jail, Lord, you can't kill nobody. Yeah, I've been to the jail. He's lost his mind here. He's lost his mind. Let's get him out! He's damn near hammered, man. He got control. No, you don't want to go. I don't want to go. I don't want to go. Hands up! Don't shoot! 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 Don't vote for Stanger! 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 We're tired of you slaying our young black men. That's right. We're tired of you slaying. We're not pleasing at all. It's not fair. No peace. No justice! No peace! No killing cop police! No justice! No peace! No killing cop police! No justice! No peace! No killing cop police! We don't want them. Nope. And we don't want to wait till January. That's right! We don't want to wait till January. You got a racial propaganda on your hands, you got a racial propaganda on your hands, boy. Treat Darren Wilson back there being kept in jail. Treat Darren Wilson back there being kept in jail. Arrest him now! 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 The only problem we should be here for is that nobody else. Hands up! Don't vote for Stanger! Don't vote for Stanger! I've been to the jail, Lord, you can't kill nobody. Yeah, I've been to the jail. He's lost his mind here. He's lost his mind. Let's get him out! Let's get him out! He's damn near hammered, man. He got control. No, you don't want to go. I don't want to go. I don't want to go. Hands up! Don't shoot! 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 Don't vote for Stanger! Don't shoot! Don't vote for Stanger! Don't vote for Stanger! Don't vote for him!
Let's call the first speaker.
He's speaker!
Let's go.
May I? I'd like to ask you, please.
I've got to the litigation.
Could I please say something, please?
You got to speak.
We would like to call the first speaker, and I would appreciate you if you would just please listen to the speakers, and let's hear what everyone has to say. And I have to say that, and I'm going to say this, that I agree with you, but I think let's, let's please. Well, we would just like to ask you to please, I respect your right to protest, I do. I'm happy to see you here and expressing your feelings, but please, let's, let's do it in an orderly fashion, and let's listen to the people who have signed up to speak. Please, let's do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jen, would you contest?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I will, I will call up each speaker.
All right, let's get the speakers rolling.
Please, let's, let's go with the speakers, please.
I'll also call up the name, call the name of the speaker after the speaker, so that the person can.
Okay. Okay, please, let's please be respectful of the speakers, thank you.
Our first speaker this evening is going to be Jerry Baum, followed by Jack Pelak.
Jerry, all right.
Hello, county council members. I'm back again. The past week I was in Kansas City, visiting my small grandchildren. The topic came up about the four-year-old's bad behavior in kinder care on Thursday. We talked a lot about choices. We can make good choices or bad choices, and we should always try to make good choices. I am therefore appealing to you, all of you today, to make a good choice by not allowing PC-1614 or 1714 and the rezoning. Things have been great during my 38 years there, and I don't think things should be changed, as agreed upon by the county council 10 years ago, when an attempt was made to rezone the area after the PEU had expired. There is still the question of whether the 13-plus acres in question is even part of the PEU between Susan Pines and South Hill, or is it a separate entity? Homeowners and possibly the majority of the apartment dwellers at Susan Pines like things in our suburban area the way it is. There are 108 homes in South Hill, and in a short amount of time, we were able to gather 166 signatures showing that we don't want this rezoned. Not everybody can make it to a 6 o'clock meeting, and I didn't have time to contact residents of the apartments until after I had submitted the petitions, but some of the people I talked to were not in favor either. The county desperately needs to change the way they inform the residents of any area they are looking at rezoning. The NCR on Telegraph Road and the Tessa Ferry Library, both in Steve Stanger's district, are two other examples where people felt the public was not adequately informed of the zoning issues until it was too late. I am really concerned about the density issues and the destruction of large forested areas. There will be a dangerous intersection 20 feet from the last house in the subdivision, where 42 duplexes will dump out into a downhill curved area of the Susan Hills Drive. Please vote your conscience and vote no against this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anita Hagan.
I want to give him like two minutes, okay?
No ma'am, we don't love that.
To the distinguished members of the St. Louis County Council, my name is Jack Pelak, and I also am a resident of South Hill subdivision. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak in opposition of Bill 206 regarding PC-1714, authorizing and giving preliminary approval to the planned PEU represented by McBride Sons. I'd like to make several points to stop this PUD or delay approval until further analysis can be made. In reviewing the submittal by the County Planning Commission, I'd like to make several key points. In Attachment A, Area Land Use and Zoning, it states the proposed development property is surrounded by multifamily buildings and cedar run. This property is no longer in business. It is named Susan Pines and owned by and managed by Monarch Investment and Management Group. This attachment is falsely represented and not in standing order. In addition, current conversations with the current apartment management firm, they are unaware of the current plans for development in this complex. In consideration of PC-7301, a traffic study was conducted in 2002, which concluded that the additional traffic generated by the proposed 90 new trips during morning peak and 100 new trips during the afternoon peak would have minimal impact on motorists carrying travel along Tessa Ferry or Wells. It has been 12 years since that study, and traffic patterns within Susan Hills have increased, as well as additional McBride development going in less than a mile away, and additional burden would be placed on Wells Road. A new traffic study should be considered, taking into account the additional school bus traffic, as well as the additional homes being built on Wells Road. The report also states that McBride must provide adequate temporary off-street parking for construction employees' parking. Parking on non-surfaced areas shall be prohibited in order to eliminate the conditions where mud from construction employee vehicles is tracked. I ask that the council reconsider approval of Bill 206 and allow time for more suitable planning to be developed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Followed by Marva Miller.
Can you turn up the sound or get us on? I'm Anita Hagan. I'm the house that's, will be next to where they're putting in the duplexes. I have lived there since 78, Susan Hills. I think the street leans towards that way, and since 78, I've had countless mailboxes taken out. My neighbors had trees taken out. During the winter, it's, it's like the Keystone Cops there. Our street is pure ice. I can imagine what the people who's gonna live down there are gonna have. The sun does not melt the ice. Last winter, the, the water main was, not the water main, the fire hydrant was taken out. This is a cutoff street. People cut, a cutoff subdivision. People from 21 go through our subdivision, and we're talking about another 150 to 200 cars that'll be going through there. I mean, if I wanted to live on Highway 21, I would've moved on Highway 21. Where they're building this, where they're building this, it's so far down, I have water problems where I am. The water, the people down there, I want it on record, so when those people have water problems, or there's car accidents, I want them to know the county council knew about this and chose not to do anything about it. I, it's, it's, it's going to be a mess, just a big mess, that's all. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marva Miller, followed by Cheryl Prim.
Good evening. My name is Marva Miller, and I'm here on behalf of Eyes on Ferguson, and as a resident of St. Louis County, and someone who has worked for nearly 25 years fighting for the rights of sisters and brothers throughout the metropolitan area, including St. Louis City, parts of St. Louis County, including Ferguson, Normandy, Jennings, Dalewood, Velda Village, Hillsdale, Country Club Hills, Bell Ridge, even Chesterfield, and my birth city of East St. Louis. It disturbs me that the atrocities continue, so I'm here tonight to ask for a status update on the following issues. One, what if any administrative intervention is occurring on the possibility of other charges, such as the missing police report and any other issues that would necessitate charges against Officer Darren Wilson? Also, the recusal of Bob McCullough on Mike Brown and other cases where conflicts of interest exist. Two, plans for effectively working with the youth.
Help, I love a visit, Ms. Miller.
I just talked to him! I just talked to him! Excuse me, plans for effectively working with youth, including Lost Voices, Prince of Peace, and We the People. No mistreatment will be tolerated. Three, an update on economic remedies for all businesses surrounding and existing in Ferguson, in Ferguson proper. In concluding, I want to let the council know that a county executive candidate will suffer behind the mistreatment of the brothers and sisters. And I want to say to everyone here, write in Mike Brown, and let the county residents figure it out. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Erby for speaking to the people tonight, and Maya appreciates you too. Thank you.
Cheryl Prim, followed by Dr. Hi Logan.
Good evening, everyone. My question is to Steve, Mr. Austin. I'd like to know, what's your black plan for Ferguson and our community with our black youth? What do you have planned to do? How you gonna handle this with someone dying on your watch? Okay? Do you know anything about us? Because if not, we don't have to vote for you, you need us. We don't need you. We will vote for Mike Brown! We gonna vote for Mike Brown! We're gonna write him in, and we will vote for him! Now, you need us!
The next speaker is Dr. Hi Logan, followed by M. Greider. Yeah. Dr. Logan, followed by M. Greider? No, Dr. Logan. M. Greider, followed by Catherine Jackson. M. Greider.
Next.
Will be followed by Catherine Jackson.
Hi, my name's Molly.
Hi, Molly.
Sorry. I just wanted to know if any of you have been out there with us while we've been harassed by the St. Louis County Police, tear-gassed, been shot at with rubber bullets, particularly you, Mr. Stanger. you, Mr. Stinger. I was really disappointed that I didn't see you in Ferguson more. I've been out there pretty much every day.
Because he's scared. He's scared. He's scared. He's scared. He's scared. Everybody!
And thank you, Councilwoman Irby, for...
I'm sorry.
I said, I wanted to thank you for your sentiments and for coming to some meetings and being there, unlike certain other members of the council who haven't bothered to show up for us. It means more than you know. That's all.
Next speaker is Catherine Jackson, followed by Gina Crowdy.
Hi, my name is Catherine Jackson, and I am not originally from St. Louis or Missouri. I'm from San Diego, California. And I have to say, when I moved to St. Louis, it became a huge culture shock. I thought I was back in the fifties. You know, this is one of the most segregated cities I have ever seen in my life. There is so much racial tension here. But what I'd really like to know is, they turned this over to the St. Louis County Police to handle, and I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna get a fair and impartial investigation when the St. Louis County Police Officers hockey team wore their things saying that they support Officer Wilson. You know, how do you get a fair and impartial hearing from them? I think they should've brought somebody in, some other police force to come in from some other place in Missouri, rather than, you know, this is like leaving the fox to watch the chickens.
Shut it down! 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 No peace! No peace! No peace! No peace!
We march all night long! We walk, we walk, we march all night long! We walk, we walk, we march all night long! We walk, we walk, we march all night long! We walk, we walk, we march all night long! We walk, we walk, we march all night long!
Your minutes, you have one minute.
My name is Dr. Henry Logan. I not only represent Eyes on Ferguson, but my brothers in the back, Lost Voices, I appreciate them for being here. My simple comment, I don't have a question, my simple comment is, I just want the council to see all of these faces back here, and remember these faces, because these are the next votes that are going to put you out of these seats. For many times, we have been used as pawns in this little systematic games, and no longer will we be a pawn for anybody in this political mess. So, here's the thing, they think it's a joke. So, the thing is, we've been at this point now, where we were told October, and then we were told after the election, now January. Well, I'm letting you know, we now have a plan in action. Hashtag, write in Mike Brown, and I want to promote that tonight, because Mike Brown is gonna be our next leader. So, go ahead.
Could I please ask the speakers to come up in the order that they're called, please? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Golladay, and I came out here today to address something. I've been watching this for quite some time now, and I had a flashback of when I was growing up. I remember when the guys that was in the Puerta Agro Project, in order to indict, it took them twenty-four hours to indict somebody. And I remember me and my husband having domestic violence. It would take them twenty hours to arrest him for putting his hands on me. Okay? Now, and I remember McCullough, when, back in those days, he had drug issues. I'm gonna bring this out. So, wait, wait, wait. And then I reflect back, hold it, bro. And then I reflect back to when he was on television a couple of weeks ago, with a smirk on his face. And then I hear today, January something. So, what I'm looking at is this, who's running it? McCullough is the governor, we already know. McCullough punked him. Do the council have any say, say, over McCullough? Are we now dealing with the Klan? What is the real deal here? Because I have never, even down in Florida with Trayvon, those police weren't playing around with Zimmerman. They immediately locked him up. So, what's, you know, who's gonna man up?
This Missouri dog.
I don't care. We need somebody to man up and take responsibility for McCullough playing around with us black folk, because that's all he doing. And y'all gets little pawns, he even got y'all scared. Steiner, don't tell him what you hiding. McCullough got something on you, boy. Hell, y'all probably worried about your job. Is my time up? Okay. Why do you want to put that out there? Who is really running this show?
Next speaker is Tef Po. Our next speaker is Tef Po. Tef Po.
Call about three of them to the line up here, so they can...
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if you hold, if everyone be quiet, I can let you know who the next speaker is, and Tara's asked it, I call three at a time, and you can line up over here to speak. The next three speakers are Tef, Po, Zachie Baruti, and Sunny. Folks, you won't be able to hear if you keep yelling. It's Tef Po, Zachie Baruti, and Sunny.
Just a moment, Tef. Just a moment, please. We need you to listen and let him speak, because while you're talking, his time is running out. So, we need you to allow him to speak. Jen, start it back over in two minutes, please. Go ahead.
You know, I just, I came here to urge y'all to be on the right side of history. Because you can sit there and act like this isn't a relevant issue, but you people are the reason that the entire world came to focus in Missouri. You want to be on the right side of history when our children read about this issue. You don't want Missouri to look like Birmingham, Alabama, in nineteen sixty-eight. You're going down in a big ball of flames. It's happening. The world is documenting this. This is no longer a local issue. This is no longer something you can put in a box and sweep up under the table. And y'all gotta be responsible. It's time to be responsible. I know you can drive home to Chesterfield, West County places that I can't drive without being harassed and pulled over, so it's not relevant to you. But guess what? The roosters are coming home to roost. We're not scared. We don't want any more petty dialogue, Stinger. We don't want dialogue. You can sit there and look like a da-da-da, because you don't really hear me. We don't want any more dialogue. We want answers, we want action. Deliver. Everybody in this world knows Bob McCullough is a racist. Everybody. Everybody. We want action. This is not the typical black people getting up to rally because a cop shot a black boy. This is a world issue. This is about human rights. You send tanks, tanks to gas children. I pull children out of tear gas, and it was on your watch, and you're gonna answer for that.
First of all, on behalf of the Justice for Michael Brown Leadership Coalition, we have issued a five-point demand in terms of dealing with justice as an extension of the murder of Michael Brown. Number one, let me just speak directly to Steve Stinger. You know, the election is coming up. We demand that you by twelve noon denounce your buddy, Bob McCullough, have him step down, because that is the right thing to do. The black community is at demand that of you. And if that's not the case, then we will make sure that you are not elected as county executive. Another point. Another point, just real quick, just real quick. Omari, I understand that you introduced a bill to build a soccer field in West County, when North County, that you represent North County, that the recreational facilities are much needed in North County. Brother Dooley, I understand you put a diversity study together. What is the status of that? So, again, I just want to close that. We want an answer from you by twelve noon, Stinger. Twelve noon tomorrow. Twelve noon tomorrow. Twelve noon tomorrow.
Twelve noon! 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 Can we please get some peace in here? I said, can we please get some peace in here? Okay, I want to, okay.
We are going to try to continue with the meeting. If we have any more outbursts like that, we are going to adjourn the meeting.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, are you Sunny?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, over the summer, I worked as a field organizer for the Charlie Dooley campaign, and I saw firsthand a lot of the corruption dealing with Steve Stinger. Now, during this, now, my question is to you, Steve Stinger. I saw throughout the campaign that you were very pro-black. You were at all the black, you know, parades, you hired black organizers, you had little black children, you know, accompanied your big fire truck. So, where are you now when it comes to the justice of Mike Brown? Where are you when it comes to being involved in the community of black lives? You said in your campaign for county executive that you were very passionate about the justice when it comes to black people. But one of the things that we, that we struggle in the black community with is white police officers killing young black men. That's one of the issues. So, where do you stand with that? First of all, Bob McCullough's own father was killed by a black man, so therefore, he is prejudiced, and he is partial and biased when it comes to this case. In two thousand, Bob McCullough decided not to convict two white officers who killed two unarmed black teens, and the police officer shot their car twenty times. So, what makes us think that we're gonna get justice for one young black teen that was killed by one black, white officer? What makes us think we're gonna get a fair trial under Bob McCullough? It's not gonna happen. So, We the People request that Bob McCullough step down, and a special prosecutor be appointed for the Mike Brown case, and we need to make that our central focus. Let it be a blessing, let it be a blessing that this case got moved to January, because that gives us more time to organize, that gives us more time to get ourselves together so that we can get justice for Michael Brown. Thank you.
Are you Mr. Rabbit?
I'm next, right now.
Are you Mr. Rabbit?
I'm next, right now. Okay, thank you.
What is your name? We need to know.
My name, my name is Gary, Minister Gary Hill. I'm a resident of Ferguson, twenty-six-hundred Damen Court. Okay? And I would like to say, and I like to speak.
Just a moment, sir. Just one moment. What, is he signed?
No, ma'am.
If you're not signed up, you cannot speak, I'm sorry.
I can't speak right now?
No, I'm sorry.
Is my name on the list? My name's supposed to be on the list. My name is Gary Hill. Okay? Can I speak? Can I speak? Can I speak? Mr. Stinger, can I speak?
I'm sorry, sir, sir.
Mr. Dooley, can I speak?
I'm sorry. Who was the next speaker?
The next speaker, Madam Chair, is Nat Rabbit, followed by Melissa Rabbit, followed by Gloria Nickerson.
Mr. Dooley said he doesn't speak.
I'm the chair.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Those are the words, I'm sorry. The next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Nat Rabbit.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak for just a moment. My name is Nat Rabbit. I'm from South Hill subdivision, concerning the PC seventeen dash fourteen. Mr. Stinger, we have, we have one question, and it is, do you feel it's ethical for a council member to accept funds from a company who's petitioning for rezoning? You know, I understand politics, you know, and, you know, you may think it's right, you know, we feel it's wrong. I think all you guys, concerning this PC seventeen fourteen in Mr. Stinger's district, I think you need to table that for a little bit. They tried quickly to get this thing passed through, a couple, like, what, about a month, month and a half ago? And I would let, you know, table this thing, and get back with McBride and Sons and the rest of the subdivision, figure out a better solution than what they've presented to you guys. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Melissa Rabbit, followed by Gloria Nickerson.
Hi, my name is Melissa Rabbit. That was my husband that just spoke. I gotta tell you, this is really intimidating to stand up here and speak, and it's a very emotional night, obviously, and our little issue is so small compared to what's going on. But it is important to us, and our subdivision is very, very much against this, and we just hope that you really look at it and see that it is going to be way too dense to put in these sixty-five units in this small space. And we're already a major cut through. It's going to create a lot more traffic. We've already had many accidents along our road, and it's important to us. I really hope that you look at it, and like Nat said, maybe you can even table it for a while, so we can really look into this, because it's very important to us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Gloria Nickerson, followed by Gabrielle Hanson and Theda Wilson.
To the Honorable Charlie Dooley, County Executive, and all of the other honorable St. Louis County District Representatives, my name is Gloria Nickerson. Many of you know me, and many of you don't. I thought I was gonna be here tonight to speak about Ferguson. Those that know me know that I stood before this council concerning the Annette Green shooting in Welston, and also the Jack-in-the-Box on handling. There's plenty of people here to speak about Ferguson tonight. I do stand with them, but I am here concerning the massive flooding that's been going on in St. Louis County. As a thirty-year property owner of St. Louis County, it is baffling to me that all parties have not come up with a solution to remedy the flooding. The parties that I speak of would be local government jurisdiction, or a municipality, St. Louis County, the state of Missouri, the St. Louis Metropolitan Sewer District, Army Corps of Engineers, the Environmental Protection Agency, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the State Emergency Management Agency. It is apparent that this has not happened. I was first affected with the great flood of nineteen ninety-three. Then again, September of two thousand and eight, June of two thousand and nine, June twenty-eleven, July twenty-thirteen, September ninth, twenty-fourteen, and again, the next day, September tenth. Right now, I am more than angry. I spent my entire retirement of six years combating flooding. I'm sick of it, and I want to see some form of action from St. Louis County to begin taking care of this problem that is plaguing much of the St. Louis County region, not in twenty-fifteen, but in the year twenty-fourteen. Many of you on this council know me very well, and for those who don't believe me, you will very soon. I am holding all of the entities that I mentioned accountable. My mission and/or ultimate goal are to bring all entities together, along with affected property owners, and begin a serious, more conscious dialogue. When I sit and wait...
Gloria, please, bring your comments to a close.
Well, I give three more seconds. When I sit and wait, wait for my twenty-fourteen real estate tax statements that will either increase or decrease. Two thousand and eight, two thousand two hundred and three dollars. Two thousand nine, two thousand two hundred and fifty thousand. Twenty-ten, two thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Twenty-eleven, my God, two thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Another flooded year. Twenty-twelve, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Twenty-thirteen, two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. According to the St. Louis...
Gloria, Gloria, excuse me. Can you and I get together and talk about that, please? Because if you go over, we're not gonna be able to. Please.
Well, I would like to...
We will.
I'll go ahead and close, but part of my statement was that I would invite my county council representative, Pat Dolan, along with Hazel Irby, who is also the county council representative for University City. Thank you.